Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the February 6th work session of the Board of Ed. I want to start by pointing out the exits. We have two exits in the back of the room and then two exits behind the dais here. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start tonight with our first recognition of visitors. There will be two opportunities for public comment at tonight's meeting, now and at the end. This first session will be capped at 30 minutes total. Anyone who does not speak now will be able to do so later. Comments including obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, or statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Anyone wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. And finally, please remember there is no cross dialogue between speakers and members of the board. Anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Barbara Gauzda. I came to the Board and asked about the college courses that we offer. And the Board came back to me with some information about the increment that parents pay. But I'd like to know how many teachers, how many students, how many courses we offer? Because this is not a mandated program. And I think as we go into the budget period, that this would be helpful to know. I think it's also helpful to know because at practically every meeting, we have parents who speak to the Board and ask about academic enrichment, or additional staff for whatever purpose. And they come back month after month after month. And they, their answers haven't been, we really haven't, it hasn't really been clear as to what's happening. And they speak to the Board, the people that we elect to respond to them. And I understand that you don't respond to questions with cross dialogue. But we don't even hear a lot of cross dialogue among the Board members. So when they get, when anyone gets an answer, where does that answer come from? When, when anyone speaks to the Board, we kind of expect that the people that we elect are going to respond to our questions and are interested in what, what we're asking. That doesn't seem to happen. And I, I think that's a disappointment. Come May, we're going to have an election again, three Board members. And I think whoever is running will be very sincere in what they say, that they're interested in the goals of the students and advancing them. But we don't hear that from the Board. And I guess if I were to call a Board member and ask for, you know, broach a topic, and I would hope that if, if that question or topic has some substance, that that Board member would be able to bring it back to the Board for discussion. And how would that happen? I guess that's, when I, when I'm here for the meetings, basically unless the Board members are spoken to and asked to make a, a decision has to be made, something has to be legally voted on. How does a Board member bring something up for discussion? I mean, Board comments only comes up like at regular Board meetings, not at work sessions. So how does something get a public comment from the Board? It's not obvious as to how that happens. And maybe that's something we need to talk about when we're electing Board members. Do they feel that cross discussion among Board members is appropriate? We elect nine people. There should be, we should feel that people that we elect are involved in the process. I just have one other thing I'd like to comment about, that when the, when Mrs. Argino gave her presentation on the academic performance for the, the couple of weeks ago, she said there was 1,281 hours available for this academic year, 22, 23-year, for academic support for the students. That 1,281 hours sounds like a lot, but as I thought about it, I don't really think it is. Because we have 12 grades. So when you divide that 1,281 hours into 12 grades, you come up with 106 hours per grade. And then when you spread it out over the 10 months that our children are in the, the process of building their education, so you take that and break it out over the 10 months, you have 10.6 hours per month per grade. I mean, we have eight or nine sections in the kindergarten through fourth grade. I just, that number seems totally inadequate to me. I just, it just falls apart, I think. And I would hope that, that we got, we got the $5 million from the Rescue Act, and we get $5 million? And I guess we bought Chromebooks with it for the, the pandemic. But are we ever going to get any kind of a breakdown as to where that, that $5 million went? And maybe that's where the 1,281 hours came from? I guess that's, that was my take on it. So I hope that at some point, we're going to hear what happened to that, that district-wide allocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gauzda.
Hello, my name is Oliver Jang, and I'm a junior at CCHS. A group of about 20 students, including myself, would really like to take AP Calculus BC next year as seniors. And Mr. Hines, a math teacher at CCHS, would really like to teach it. But AP Calculus BC is not offered at CCHS, only AP Calculus AB is. And now the difference between these two is that AP Calculus AB is only one semester of College Calculus, whereas BC is two semesters or a full year of College Calculus. And I believe that AP Calculus BC is essential for students, including myself, who would like to pursue a STEM career or major during or after college. And the benefits of offering BC at CCHS would be numerous, such as higher chances for acceptance into top universities and colleges in general, additional college credits, and a brilliant, brilliant impact on students' futures. But if AP Calculus BC is already offered, or I mean, if AP Calculus AB is already offered at CCHS, why is AP Calculus BC necessary? Well, first and foremost, AP Calculus BC can increase students' chances of getting accepted into top colleges and universities, like I said earlier. And it looks significantly better on students' high school transcripts than AB does, as well it is more advanced than AP Calculus AB. And because AP Calculus BC is a full year of College Calc, it also counts for double the credits in most colleges, saving students a lot of time and money in the long run. They could skip pretty much a whole year of college math. Additionally, the STEM field is the future, as many of you know, and AP Calculus BC is an extremely important, or is extremely important for students who wish to pursue a major or career in the STEM field during or after college. While AP Calculus AB covers a lot of calculus material, AP Calculus BC covers more material and goes into greater depth than AP Calculus AB, requiring students to apply mathematical concepts to real-world situations rather than memorizing formulas and concepts. And, sorry. And is overall a better choice for students serious about the STEM field. By offering AP Calculus BC, CCHS can provide students with a more solid foundation in calculus and help them develop the skills and knowledge necessary to succeed in their future STEM endeavors. Thirdly, AP Calculus BC better prepares students for colleges and universities than AP Calculus AB. AP Calculus BC is much more advanced than AP Calculus AB, so students can skip introductory level math courses and move directly into higher-level math courses, which will greatly accelerate a student's learning. Infinite sequences and series are a fundamental part of calculus, and this material, as well as parametric equations, polar coordinates, you get the idea. All of this is only offered in AP Calculus BC, not in AB. With this knowledge, students can be better prepared for these higher-level math courses in the future than if they took AP Calculus AB. Now, the rigorous and challenging nature of AP Calculus BC can also help students dramatically improve upon their critical thinking skills and problem-solving abilities that they currently possess. Moreover, the mean score of AP Calculus BC students is 3.62, which is passing, versus 2.77 for AP Calculus AB, which is failing. Additionally, 75.2% of AP Calculus BC students got a 3 or higher and passed, while only 51% of AP Calculus AB students passed their exam. And this data is all coming from the College Board website, the statistics they provided from the last May 2021 AP exams. Not, so what does this mean? This means that the average grade of students in BC, even though there are less of them, by the way, I forgot to mention that, is higher than the students in Calculus AB. And there are more of them. So students will perform better, basically, if they take BC. And the average grade of a student in Calculus II in college, after getting a five on the AB exam, is 3.23. But the average grade for a student in Calculus II, after taking Calc BC, is a 3.66. So this shows that students who take Calc BC not only perform better on the exam, but also in college. Now, I know not everyone will take AP Calculus BC over AP Calculus AB, it's a pretty hard class. However, I believe that it is not fair to the 20 or so students, including myself, who do want to take AP Calculus BC, because we all want to pursue careers in the future that, that are in the STEM field. And that's kind of an essential part of it. Furthermore, I realize that adding this course may create difficulty with the Counseling Department adding a course so close to the release of the junior schedule selections. However, I believe that the benefits of AP Calculus BC greatly outweigh the drawbacks by a factor of about 10 to 1. That's my personal opinion, though. We have, oh, right. Other than these reasons, there is no reason why our school should not offer AP Calculus BC. I mean, we have 20 students who would love to take it and a teacher who would love to teach it. We, we do not have to replace all existing AP Calculus AB sections with BC sections. We may be like one section of AB and one section of BC. But we, we students undoubtedly love math, and we would sincerely appreciate the addition of AP Calculus BC to our school's list of course selections. In summary, I hope our school will consider my proposal. AP Calculus BC is the superior choice to students and is more advanced and in-depth than AP Calculus AB. AP Calculus BC will jumpstart many students' futures and give them a better-equipped brain for college. With this proposal, I also have support from the head of the Math Department at CCHS, Mr. Flannery, my guidance counselor, Mrs. McDowell, and a list of signatures of students who would like to take AP Calculus BC, which is right here. Do you want me to pass it around? That's all I have.
One sec, you said your name was Aldridge Eng?
Oliver Jang.
Can you spell your last name, just so I get it totally right?
J-A-N-G.
J-A-N-G. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move to, well, before we get to our presentation, I would just like to respond to some questions that were raised at a previous meeting. Well, just very quickly, in relation to Ms. Gauzda's comment, I, we do have a response period now at the end of each public comment period, and I do believe every time you've, you've raised a question, you have received a response, either through email, in person, in some cases, both. So I think it is fair to point that out. Regarding a previous question that we got about the district's ongoing one-to-one initiative, which aims to put a Chromebook in the hands of every student, Mr. Dade will be providing an update to the Board tonight regarding this very question, but I just want to give a very brief summary. First of all, neither Mr. Dade nor the Board has ever claimed that we are currently a one-to-one district, but that we are making significant progress toward that goal. As a reminder, when we first set this goal about two and a half years ago, there were two challenges: devices, but also infrastructure. I think everyone focuses on the devices part, which is the actual Chromebooks. But they forget that we had infrastructure that we needed to build out in order to support those devices. Three years ago, our buildings were not outfitted to support a student body with wireless devices, so our first task was to do that, which was pretty monumental. But we completed it in less than a year, which was ahead of schedule. To pay for that work, we used a share of the money that we received from the Smart School Bond Act, but less than expected, because we did so much of that work in-house. In the time since, we have expanded Chromebook access so that every student 7 through 12 has a dedicated Chromebook, every kindergartner has a laptop, and there are hundreds of 1st through 6th graders with Chromebooks, although not all. Chromebooks for the remaining students will be purchased with the final share of money allocated under the Smart School Bond Act. The only catch is, the state still needs to release that money to us. It's been approved, we've done all the legwork we can do, we're just waiting for it to be dispersed, which is a frustrating but common position to be in. So that's the high-level review. It's been two and a half years, we've done all the infrastructure work, ahead of schedule and under budget. We have put a Chromebook in most students' hands, not all. And once we get that money from Albany, we will do the rest. For a more detailed update regarding the actual numbers, I will leave that to Mr. Dade and his presentation, which will be coming up later in the meeting. But for now, again, that's just that high-level view on where we are with the one-to-one. Okay, and that brings us to our, sorry. So tonight, the Board of Education would like to honor a very special member of our community, one who has contributed more to the safety of our students and staff than perhaps most people realize. I'm talking, of course, about Cornwall Police Chief Todd Hazard. Whenever we, as a Board, have interacted with Chief Hazard, I think we have all come away feeling a lot more assured than when we went into it. His dedication and proactive approach to safety has been an invaluable asset to our community, and while he will be sorely missed, I know he will ensure that his replacement and the department he has led will carry the torch. So for more, I will hand it to Superintendent Dade.
All right, so to say this is bittersweet would not be able to capture the true sentiment. My dad retired from the Metropolitan Police Department about 20 years ago, and any child of law enforcement remembers a few milestones in, in their careers. I remember when my dad made sergeant. I was too young to be a part of his swearing-in. But the date that I remember most fondly, and my mom was right there with me, is the retirement. You live through night after night, day after day, of wondering if your dad will come home safely, as here, as they are making sure they're taking care of their community. So for me, this is, this is a truly bittersweet moment. I haven't had a chance to know Chief Hazard as long as a lot of people in this room. But when I say quiet confidence, nothing but confidence from our administrators when they pick up the phone and call Chief Hazard for advice, for guidance, for next steps. When our community was grappling with what to do next after tragedies across the nation, I know to a person, we felt so much better knowing that Chief Hazard was at the helm of, of our police department here in Cornwall. So as a son of a law enforcement retiree, Chief Hazard, I, I just respect the heck out of everything that you did in this career for 35 years. We were fortunate to have you as our chief for about half of those 35 years. So I hope that you know that you are going to leave shoes that are much too large to fill, but I know that Chief Gebert will pick up the phone and rely on you as, as he makes his way to becoming the chief that we all hope that he will be, following in your footsteps. So we have a small token of our appreciation, but if we could all give a round of applause for Chief Hazard.
Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Dade. Actually, the pleasure's been all mine working with this district. I've had nothing but great experiences going from everybody in the back there, all our building principals, our security, our administrators here, our school board. It's not like that in every district, I've learned, speaking with some of my peers and different principals who speak with other principals in other districts. I think it's unique in Cornwall. It's a unique district. We all have the same goal, that's for the safety and the well-being of our staff and students. It's a unique district. We have a student here tonight asking for harder courses. I think I'm going to try some of that calculus when I retire, it sounded very interesting. So it's all what makes Cornwall great, but pleasure's been all mine working with the district. We have always had great superintendents from Mr. Ream and right up to Mr. Dade. It's just been one smooth thing after the other, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you.
Chief, if I can ask you if the entire Board would like to come up and just take a picture with Chief Hazard? Once again, thank you, Chief Hazard. All right, now for the rest of our agenda, we move on to an update on our one-to-one initiative, and for that, I will pass it on to Superintendent Dade.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. So just wanted to provide an update, just to make sure that we're all operating from the same information. So just taking a quick journey back, we initially submitted our Smart Schools Bond Act application back in the 2016, 2017 school year. The grant was for approximately $1.5 million. In that initial submission, remember back in 1617, we allocated approximately $200,000 for classroom technology, $950,000 for broadband and wireless connectivity. So what Mr. Cardy was saying, we just did not have the infrastructure in our schools to allow the devices to perform. And then $400,000 for future technology needs. Enter the pandemic, which accelerated the technology needs of our district. If you don't remember, I'll remind you that at the time, we were fully committed to making sure that any family that needed a device, that we were going to provide them with a Chromebook so that our kids could work remotely at home in support of our hybrid instructional model. Also remind you of a letter that I had to send out to the community when we did a survey to see what parents wanted for their kids as we navigated the pandemic. And at that time, there was a good segment of our community that wanted to go full remote, and we were unable to support that as a district, because we didn't have the infrastructure in place to stream and things of that nature that other districts in our area were able to do. We were fortunate to have Sean get hired in October of 2020, and he and his team addressed the vast majority of our broadband and wireless needs in-house. So we purchased as many Chromebooks as possible at the time. If you also remember in the news, every district across the United States was purchasing Chromebooks as we all navigated the pandemic, so thus, there was a shortage at that time. We updated the Board and community at the end of that school year in April of 2021. We informed everyone, the Board and the community, that we would be making a modification to our original Smart Schools Bond Act application. We signaled to everyone that there was going to be a shift of funding to classroom technology. I'll remind you that the vast majority of the funding in our initial application was going towards infrastructure. Enter Sean and his team handled those infrastructure needs, so we could shift those funds, the vast majority, to classroom technology. We provided another presentation to the Board and the community on October, on August 16th of 2021. At that time, there was 1.35 million remaining in our Smart School Bond Act funding. We let the Board and community know that in that shift to classroom technology, we had adopted a standard classroom model. The details of that standard classroom model were provided for the Board and the community at that time. It included a one-to-one, a Chromebook for every student in grades 1 to 12, a Surface Pro for math, grade 8, algebra to 12th grade, one-to-one iPad for every kindergarten student, a 14-inch Chromebook for every teacher. a 14-inch Chromebook for every teacher, a desktop computer for every teacher, and 86-inch interactive televisions for every classroom. So that was the standard classroom model that was presented to the board and the community on August 16th, 2021. We also outlined what the shift in funding would look like at that time. There was going to be $630,000 spent on that technology for our classrooms, both our staff and our students, and $720K for replacement of obsolete instructional technology hardware over the next three to four years. So I reminded the board in both presentations that going to one-to-one is not a one-year plan. You have to have a plan in place for when devices go obsolete, when devices need repairs, and things of that nature, so you really have to build a plan. What if the board decides that it cannot allocate funding for technology for our kiddos and we've already promised our families that we would be one-to-one? That's why we're putting that funding into obsolete equipment and things of that nature. We went into that in pretty good depth. The standard classroom model was also shared with all staff during the superintendent's conference day kickoff for the 21-22 school year. I had a presentation, and in that presentation, we outlined every single component of the standard classroom model to kick off the 21-22 school year. There were some comments made that our technology is outdated and kind of gave me like a Flintstones picture in my head. Just to assure everyone, all devices that we're purchasing are Lenovo or Dell. Do any Google search that you like, there's going to be in the top five of every site that you look on for Chromebooks for the education landscape. So most importantly, we've advanced the one-to-one initiative despite the state not providing the funds that we need. $1.35 million is no small check that we're waiting for, so that's why we didn't meet our goal of by the end of the 21-22 school year. It's hard to purchase that much technology when it's an unfunded piece for our district. So once that comes in, we will be able to fully implement our standard classroom model. In the meantime, we continue to move some things around to try to purchase more and more technology for our students. So just wanted to provide an update with factual information on kind of where we are with our one-to-one initiative and what's to come.
Thank you, Terry. Just a quick question. If I remember correctly, at the end of last year, we had, I want to say, all of the high school was one-to-one, and we were up to maybe fourth or fifth grade, so it was just sort of a donut hole in the middle school. Can you just update us on what grades are one-to-one right now? Is my recollection correct there?
Yes, that's, the high school, I believe, was fully one-to-one by the end of last year. We are now 7 through 12, one-to-one, with a dedicated device for every student, along with kindergarten. There are some grade levels in different schools that are totally one-to-one, but district-wide, we can say confidently, 7 through 12 in kindergarten. That is not to say grades 1 through 6 do not have any devices, they have plenty. We're just not at the point where there's a dedicated device for every single child in those grades, but there continue to be carts in every school at every grade level available for those students to utilize as we await the state funding.
When it comes to classified students, if they're in the elementary level, do those children automatically get a one-on-one Chrome, or does it have to do with, let's say, there are some of the people that don't in those lower grades? Does it have to come with a classification, does it have to come with a CSC recommendation?
Yeah, there wouldn't be an automatic. It would depend on whether there's assistive technology or something of that nature in the IEP, so it's not an automatic.
Sound automatic.
Correct.
Okay, and that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Terry. We will now move on to our committee reports, so I'll just go around the room here. Larry, anything on facilities?
We're having our February meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
So I'll give you an update after that.
Got it. Margaret is not here for visitation. I don't know if anybody else has a...
I just take the opportunity to mention that we still do not have a final draft approved by the full visitation committee to disseminate, you know, at this level. There was one, my understanding is there was an initial draft, and that leave of that draft not approved by the committee.
Got it. Okay, so that's the current status on visitation. Jim, the perfunctory audit check-in?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Louis, the scholarship committee.
Yeah, just a reminder to everybody that we, you know, we looked to fund a scholarship committee. We turned the year, and kids are looking at scholarships, and they're being announced on the announcements. Typically, we try to want to get them in around April, get them by April. May is like the funding time, so just a poke.
Just an observation, I went to look it up on our website, and I saw a bunch of scholarships listed. Ours was not. So just whoever lists them.
And is that, I'm just trying to remember if that's a comprehensive list. I know there's windows of time that scholarships come online, and if I recall, the board's scholarship was towards the latter end, so it may be when it comes online by way of the start date and due date. Yep.
Larry, I can tell you, I'll follow up. The guy that's here is listening, he's going to be the guy I'm going to contact, so I think it'll be easy.
Be pretty sad if our scholarship wasn't good enough to be promoted. That's telling us something. All right, Policy Committee, Teresa.
Okay, we have a lot of policies that we went through February 1st. Now it loses its meaning because I can't do this at the same time. Thank, I want to thank the committee because there was a lot to go through. Tonight, we're going to have a first reading with an adoption, and those are basically for policies that we cannot touch. They're 504s, they're state-mandated policies. And then we're going to have a first reading on some of the policies, and then we're going to have a final reading on some of the policies. So having said that, we're also going to be finally, when I say finally, doing the final on our policy number 1230, which is public participation at board meetings. All the board members discussed this in December, we made some changes, and we're ready to go. And that'll be on the next thing that we talk about for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. And that leaves communications. So the Communication Committee met two weeks ago. We spoke about upcoming events that we would plan. We are tentatively scheduling a forum for the end of March, which would be a kind of a multi-year in review. It doesn't seem like there's a pressing, you know, a single pressing issue, so we thought it was a good chance, a good opportunity being, now that we, I think, can safely put COVID in the rearview mirror as a way of just taking stock of where we were, where we've come, and with a hint towards, you know, what the next phase of growth looks like. And we also, and then we talked about our budget forums, which we'll get on the calendar for the May period. We also talked about other ways that we could communicate with the community, knowing that it's always easier to communicate with parents and people who are already within the school district. We have the school messenger. Typically, that's the basis of our Facebook and social media support, so being able to reach outside of that group was, has always been a task. So already have started conversations with the Cornwall Local about increasing our presence there, seeing what that could look like to have regular updates reaching the community. And then we'll explore, you know, how to take whatever messages we share through Cornwall Local and maybe expanding it out in other ways that might require, you know, printing budget. I look at Harvey. But things that we can discuss as the next months go on. It wouldn't be every month, but, you know, periodic updates to the larger community.
Brendan, I tell you the truth, this is really something I've been thinking of for a while, and I'd like to just bring it to the committee for them to discuss it. The committee's been doing a wonderful job, and to branch off on what you just said. In my years in, on the MW Board, what I found was, historically, the community, when we went out to them many years ago for the high school, for that capital project, people came to us and said, basically, you know, "The only time you talk to us," now, this isn't parents, this is the outside community. "The only time you talk to us is when you need money." And that's generally, you know, what they said. Now, they're not parents to get off on what you were just saying, to take off on that. These are members of the community, people like myself, I don't have children in the district, so there's not that connection, a direct connection, and yet, the importance of the schools and good schools affect us all. So what we did then, and we enacted, was reaching out, similar to what you did with the capital project. Megan, right now, does a wonderful job with sending out those emails, updating the, you know, updating the parents on all the wonderful things that are happening. Informational, exciting things in all different areas of our school. Now, when I was on the board, what we did was, it was a trifold, and yeah, there was some money involved, not a lot, not a lot, good return on, you know, Harvey, but it was a trifold we actually sent out, but what we did also was, we had a superintendent section where they put, the superintendent had a, not a blurb, but, you know, a letter from the superintendent, a letter from the board president discussing some of the board activities and discussions that have been going on, and again, highlights of our school. Now, we put, we did mail them, but for time budget allowing, we also put them in the senior centers. We put them in libraries, senior centers, local grocery stores, local stores, pizza places. I mean, they don't mind, these are nice little things for people to pick up and read about. So to piggyback on what you said, I just thought I'd kind of give you that idea because I think it's very cost-effective, and as I said, if I wasn't sitting at this table, I believe in schools, I believe in my local schools, I would vote yes for a budget, that's not the point, but I really wouldn't know what I was voting yes for, other than public school education. So I think that would be something you might want to consider.
Yep, thank you for that, Teresa. Great, so that rounds out the committees, so let's go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull a particular item off the consent agenda? No? Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the superintendent of schools, items 2 through 6. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to new business, non-consent agenda, number, item number one is the first reading and adoption of BOE policies. So just to recap what Teresa set up there a couple minutes ago. So these are unchanged policies. Many of them are boilerplate policies that come down to us from the state, if not from federal, and they, these are just reapproving within our three-year cycle, but have gone through no changes from what is currently existing. So assuming everybody has had a chance to look through all of these policies, we will proceed. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the BOE does hereby accept the first reading review of BOE policies, take the rest per document. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, just as an observation, these are not just rolled over without being looked at. Every department that is touched by these, the administrator of that department reevaluates it, makes sure that it's still relevant, and so on, so.
Just a quick question. So I noticed that some of these policies, like I look back at our existing policies, and some of them I couldn't find, so are we just like restructuring them in a way? If you can just explain that for me? I'll have Linda confirm, but once they're up for revision, we pull them from board docs because they're under revision, so once they are approved by the board, they go back on. That's why. Okay, so we've had all these policies all along. Okay. I just wanted to confirm that, but thank you.
Just to clarify something I heard from Terry. The policies that are currently under review, here about to be moved on, or actually, I guess voted on, I think we've already moved it, right? They're currently in effect. What's the rationale for removing them from the website if they're still in effect, yet we plan to revise them at our upcoming meeting?
We don't care either way, so the board just lets us know what you want us to do.
I would think just from a transparency perspective, to Richard's point, if we have these policies and they're still in effect, leave them up there, and then as we refresh and update and then have, you know...
Less work for us.
I think that might be one less step, but I don't know why, I guess, did the previous board ever make that request? I'm unaware of one over the last couple of years.
We'll do that moving forward.
I think, I think we should leave them and put a note next to it that it's undergoing a review.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree, because when I look back, I'm like, we have 24 policies, where are they? You know, I thought we were just all of a sudden. So yeah, I don't understand that, just for transparency.
Guys, this is something that I say to my wife all the time, know how to take yes for an answer.
Yeah, that's easy.
All good. I don't know what the rationale was, so just a past practice.
Brendan?
Yeah.
There's policy 5152. I had a chat like back and forth today with Richard. I mean, he was kind of asking to know a little bit more about that, and I know we went at length during the policy committee about that, and I basically asked like two different questions on it. I don't know if we can maybe explain it for the...
Which policy?
Is that 5152?
5152, the non-resident students. Like an example or two, and what's allowed, what's not allowed, and...
I'm just trying to suss out the question here, Bass. What are you asking about 5152 in particular?
What's the definition of non-resident student? What qualifies, what do not qualify? I mean, something like that.
Was that Richard's? Richard, you wanted that question.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll clarify here. So I was asking that question based on, I didn't find it in our current policies, and Terry, you explained the reason as to why we, you know, they weren't in there because we pulled them to review, and now we're up to vote, so I think I understand it now. This was a current existing policy. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Richard?
Yeah.
Just for future reference, when you're reading a policy, go all the way down, lower left, it'll tell you when it was originally adopted.
Right.
And in this case, it was December 16th, 2019.
Right, and that's why I was kind, because I saw where it was adopted, and I'm like, well, where is it? You know, but now it makes total sense.
Gotcha.
So thank you.
Richard, again, you're aware of everything, and like you're not questioning anything.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, we feel good about that? Again, these are just the first reading, this is not the adoption of them, so they go back to a second reading?
No, it's the adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is the adoption.
Sorry. First reading and adoption, I'm skipping ahead to first reading of the next ones. Never mind. Scratch that. So no more, no more questions on these ones? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. All right, so that's, on to item number two, which is the first reading of BOE policies. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the BOE does Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the BOE does hereby accept the first reading of the following policies, take that per document. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, and really specifically, 4321-12 and 4321-12R, and this may apply to all of them. Are all of these reviewed by counsel as written?
Yes, so these two in particular came down from NISBA, and so the Board's lawyers, the State Board's lawyers have already looked through these. So we typically rely on those for our checkmark, as the National School Boards Association, and their attorneys reviewed it. So then we'll, we'll take those revisions and put them into our existing policy.
I just, yep, wanted to make sure, because sometimes you have to, I can form an opinion about a lot of things, but sometimes you really need to rely on the experts, and I read those, and so this is something that legal counsel really needs to be involved in approving, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the case. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Brings us to final reading and adoption of BOE policy 1230. Again, this is the public participation at board meetings. Resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the final reading of BOE policy 1230 and adoption of said policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
So let me just say that I'm very appreciative of the Policy Committee for going at this once, twice, thrice, I think. I like what we finally got to, and I think we've been doing the spirit of this document for a while now, so, so I'm very happy to acknowledge all the hard work that went in, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. One thing I do want to point out that would be, as John kind of alluded to, it's a codification of current practice, or at least what has been practiced over the last two months or so. So that will continue. One thing that would be different that we had spoken about, but now we would implement, is having a mechanism to gather public contact information should they wish to get a direct response. And as we've said, anybody who asks a direct question, we will do our best to follow up with an answer at the following board meeting, but there might be times when somebody wants a specific follow-up if it's, you know, for whatever reason. And we have, in the past, we haven't really had a way to do that beyond just taking their, their name and maybe looking them up ourselves. So we will have a contact form, actually, in anticipation of this passing, we already have a contact form that will be at the end of the table there, right next to Linda. And so if anybody who is leaving a comment wants to get a direct response later, leave your name, perhaps your phone number, perhaps your email address, if you wish. Again, then that, that's established here in this policy as well. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. And that brings us to our final recognition of visitors. So anybody wishing to speak, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, limit your comments to three minutes, and as I've said, if you wish to get a response directly afterwards, you can leave your contact information on the contact form next to Linda. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber Baranelli. I just want to touch on something that you guys had spoken about regarding information getting out to the community and such. And as a parent in the community, in the school, I do get the announcements for the school in which my child is in. But like, high school, my child would have been in, I'm no longer getting the announcements, and it would still be nice to know because that child's friends are still in there and things are going on, that, you know, I would still like to help and participate. Is there any way going forward that, you know, on some, you know, I don't know what it's called, but you have like on the bottom an unsubscribe? Is there any way of like going forward if people want to continue to get those announcements, or if they don't, they can choose to, say, unsubscribe and no longer get those announcements? Is there, you know, am I confusing? I don't mean to be confusing, but...
I want to get the request right. Are you saying like to opt into other schools' announcements?
Well, I had, I had a child that just graduated, and if I go onto Parent Portal, he's still on there. And I have a child that's in middle school. But I did have a child that passed away and who would have been a junior this year, and there's a lot of things that happen during the junior and senior years, and I still want to help participate in some of those activities, just because I do know some of those children, and I'm still friendly with those parents of her friends. So, but I'm kind of like out in no-nowhere land, kind of like I don't know what's going on, and it just would be maybe, if we could unsubscribe at a point where we no longer want to, you know, have those announcements, and like regarding like scholarships that are coming up, and making sure, you know, we can get information that way. I don't know if that makes sense, but...
It makes total sense. I don't know about any policy, you know, change, but we will make sure that you get those announcements.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, because it's like, once your child leaves that particular school building, you no longer get the information and announcements and what's happening. Like, I know this elementary school, they're having their, their raffle basket fundraiser, which was always a great deal, and it was a lot of fun, and so like, you know, you might want to help participate, you know, have that volunteerism continue. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mrs. Baranelli. Anybody else? Okay.
My main concern is to seek the appropriate level of support for students with qualified learning disabilities. There are federal laws that require schools to provide the appropriate level of support, and I will continue to argue and advocate that you are failing to meet the minimum standard for your 11th grade regents classes. I've been here four times now, bringing the topic up again and again. You are teaching me a lesson in tenacity, if nothing else. Coming here to raise this issue has caused a cascading effect that I would like to address. I am a person of my word. I work to be reasonable, compassionate, and a straight shooter, and as a result, to be viewed as a trusted member of the community. I believe there is misinformation out there with regards to how my concerns have been addressed, and I'd like to clear that up. This is in two areas. One with regards to what was previously reported at the January 9th board meeting, and the second more directly related to my interactions with the Board and Administration. At the January 9th board session, Mr. Cardy stated that, quote, "The Administration is ready to implement short-term assistance in the form of push-in instruction and increased tutoring hours. Members of Administration have met with both of these parties in the past and will meet them again in the near future to provide more direct information." It has been 20 days since that statement was made. There has been no push-in instruction, no communication about increased tutoring hours. Frankly, I haven't seen anything about any tutoring hours at all, much less an increase. So, Mr. Cardy, when you stated Administration is ready to implement, I think that was, you may have been misled. I'm curious how long it takes from being ready to actually doing something. This is misleading, and it's insinuating the district has responded to the issues raised. Let me be clear, there's been no short-term assistance implemented. Your special ed 11th grade students are still being ignored. You said members of the Administration have met with the parties. Yes, the building-level Administration met with us. That was at our request for the meeting back in October. At this meeting, we were told it was essentially out of their hands for support this year, and hence, that's why I came to you, the Board, asking for you to hold the Administration accountable to do something. No one has met with us since we made that initial request. That statement is misleading, sounding as if someone has met with us since we've come to the Board. And I don't know when a meeting in the near future will take place, as I haven't heard anything in response to the issue I've raised. The statement made is inaccurate and misleading. Nothing has been done. On the second point I'd like to clear up, I've had three people stop me in the community, ask me what's going on and what I'm doing. I don't usually talk to people out in the community, so this was odd. Not to be rude, it just doesn't happen like that. They were questioning if I emailed Administration and really hadn't heard back, almost insinuating I wasn't telling the truth. They were asking if I had emailed Mr. Dade and his team, and that seemed to be a particular sticking point, and I was confused. I never said I emailed anyone about this issue. I went and spoke with people in person, and when I was told there was not much they could do, I came here in person, asking the Board to hold people accountable. I offered to brainstorm solutions and ask for your support. I've been here in person four times. I consider that reaching out, and wouldn't think a follow-up email necessary. When I say no one in Administration has responded to me, it's in reference to these in-person comments. You know my name, I get all your emails and all your outreach otherwise. I don't like playing games, and this is really beginning to feel like one. I hope you agree it's ridiculous that I'm here speaking to you about misinformation rather than about the success of your short-term solutions. But I can't do that because nothing's happened. Co-teach for U.S. History isn't a new topic. It's my understanding that the teachers themselves have advocated for this year after year. At my annual IEP meeting last year, or my daughter's annual IEP meeting last year, I was told it was being discussed as a real need and would be presented to upper administration for budget consideration. That request was taken out of the budget presented to the Board for approval. Time and again, the needs of your students are being ignored. There are creative solutions that I'm sure we could, could be developed, but it's clear to me no one cares enough to explore the topic. Now, in addition to not meeting the needs of your students, this is also an issue of trust. It seems like a lot of smoke and mirrors and general statements to make it seem like you're doing your part, but you are not. Mr. Dade, your goals for the 2022-23 year look good on paper, but when you are evaluated at the end of the year, I hope you're held accountable for not meeting expectations with regards to your goal to, quote, "Develop and implement policy, professional development, and practices that support inclusion for all students, staff, and families." Your actions speak louder than words. Your practices are to highlight your high achieving students and your accomplished athletes, and I'm right there with you, cheering their successes. I'm in the line cheering for the football team. I'm congratulating folks on Facebook for making honor roll. It's amazing what can be accomplished when time and effort is poured into a student. But while you are bragging about their accomplishments, you are looking the other way and not seeking to understand or make a difference for your students who learn differently. There never seems to be a shortage or a challenge finding money for additional AP classes, especially since it's a goal of yours to increase these. Just a budget shortage and a challenge when it comes to resources for special education needs. These students learn differently. They are not less than, but your actions say otherwise. And frankly, this strikes me as elitist and not at all inclusive. You are the leader of this district, and I can't pair your role to that of a CEO of a business. You set the tone for what happens. I'm an executive coach for business leaders like you, and I often have to hold the mirror up to help them see things from a different perspective. I'm rooting for them to be better, just like I'm rooting for you, to see the impact of your words and actions. Mr. Dade, you've had many mirrors held up for you, and you continually look the other way, not just about this topic, but others I've seen brought to your attention over the past two years. I have a feeling Oliver's not going to have to wait for a response about his request for AP classes. If you want to be true to your word and set the tone and be the kind of leader Cornwall Central School District deserves, you need to start looking in the mirror.
Ms. Diaz, one, one second, I just want to be sure that, I think there might be a miscommunication going on, I want to be sure that we have the right information. Did you receive, there was an email that was sent to you after last meeting, did you receive that? Okay, so there might be maybe the wrong email address on file, would you?
[inaudible]
Okay, I just want to be sure that there aren't wires being crossed, because it was a, it was an email that, that you had, I guess you perhaps had reached out from before. This is just in an interest to get you a response.
Is there a subject now? You can show it.
So, okay, I understand. I just want to confirm your email address, that's all I'm trying to do. I, I understand that, I just, yes, that's, that's all I'm asking, yeah. I, it's up to Megan, yeah, that's it. Ms. Diaz, I, I'm not...
Those are wires crossed, I get that, and I'll be responsible.
I'm just trying to, just in the interest of moving forward, that's all.
And I just want to clarify that the statement that she's referring to from the January 9th meeting that we were not present at, there has been no meeting, and there was no communication for us to meet with any Administration. The last communication I have had with any personnel was at my son's CSE meeting on Friday, and I asked to reconvene after the budget vote, because I'm really hoping that you all do the right thing. Thank you.
So we'll get that cleared up on the, the email front. All right. Anyone else for a public comment? Then I will move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good night, everybody.